A hybrid meeting with some individuals participating remotely while others are participating in the boards and commissions room at Seattle City Hall. We will move on to the Color Brave Space norms. I would like to invite a fellow commissioner to choose and briefly speak to the relevance of one of these Color Brave Space norms to today's agenda. Do we have a volunteer today? Oh, Monica, I see you're unmuted. Would you be willing to pull one forward and speak to it?
Yes. Um, I'm going for green. Look for learning and commit to learning in public. I think this speaks to me in a lot of different ways, and I think it speaks to our collective work in continuing to challenge ourselves to grow and be open to learning new truths.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you so much. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. If there are no amendments or modifications to these Color Brave Space norms, I suggest we all agree to use these today in the course of our discussion. On the agenda today, we have two items. The first is an update on subarea planning efforts that are underway, that are being led by the Office of Planning and Community Development. Following that update, we'll have a working session to provide additional input on to specific issue papers that we are working on as a commission in advance of the upcoming budget deliberations at City Council. For our first official act of the afternoon, we will need a motion and a second to approve the July 25th, 2024 meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
Nick moves to approve the minutes.
And a second.
For a second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Is anybody choosing to abstain? With that, the meeting minutes from the last planning commission meeting pass unanimously. In terms of our upcoming, I'm now moving on to the chair's report. In terms of our upcoming commission meetings, our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 22nd, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. That meeting, like this one, will be in a hybrid format with options for reading in person in the boards and commissions room or using the MS Teams platform. And the August meeting of the Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting has been canceled. I think those that notice went out today, so please make note of that recent change. With that, I will turn it over to Vanessa for announcements and commission business.
Great. Thanks very much, Michaela. So as Michaela noted, this is a hybrid format meeting. We have planning commission staff and staff from the Office of Planning and Community Development and a commissioner and a soon-to-be commissioner joining us here in the boards and commissions room of City Hall, Seattle City Hall, I should note. And the rest of the commissioners are joining the call via Teams. For those who are joining the meeting via Teams, please put your name in the chat to be recognized to speak when it comes time for commissioner comments, questions, and discussion. Please do not put substantive comments in the chat because we want to make sure that anybody who may be calling in actually benefits from the full discussion of the commission. I've not received any public comment to read at the beginning or at the end of the meeting, so I will not be doing that. I do want to update everybody that four recommended appointees to the planning commission were introduced to the land use committee yesterday of Seattle City Council. They are Zio Alvarez, Cecilia Black, Dylan Vosseki, and Dylan Stevenson. The committee approved and recommended approval of those appointments, and those appointments will go before full City Council on Tuesday. And we'll be very excited to join our new cohort of planning commissioners. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Michaela to start the round of introductions. After introducing yourself, please call on a fellow commissioner to introduce themselves or ask myself for assistance identifying who hasn't been called on yet.
Okay, good afternoon, Michaela Daffern. I use she/her pronouns. I work in affordable housing policy and planning, and I live in Capitol Hill, and I co-chair the planning commission with my new co-chair, Jamie Strobel, who I will pass it to next. Maybe Jamie has stepped away. I will pass it to Deanna next.
Good afternoon. My name is Deanna Quintanar. I use she/her pronouns. For my day job, I'm a multimodal transportation planner. I live in Capitol Hill. And I will pass it over to Jamie.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jamie Strobel. I use she/her pronouns, and I am in the future 130th station area and work in climate change and environmental justice.
How about Monica?
Yes. My name is Monica Sharma. I use she/her pronouns. I live in the Central District, and I work in organizing and advocacy around equity in youth sports and physical activity for King County Play Equity Coalition, and I will pass it to Nick.
Good afternoon, Nick Whipple. I use he/him pronouns. I live in West Seattle in the North Del Ridge neighborhood, and for my day job, I am a city planner. How about Rose?
Hey, all. Rose Lucilla Woodson, pronouns they/them. I live up north in Lipton Springs, and I work as a professional wetland scientist and permitting specialist with Jacobs Engineering for my day job. Pass it to Lauren.
Good morning, everyone. Lauren Squire, Sheever. I work at King County Metro. I do the transit program lead, and I live in South Seattle.
Theo.
Hi, y'all. CEO Alvarez, she/they pronouns. I live in White Center, Highland Park, and I'm a designer and architect here for downtown. I can't see the full list of everybody on the meeting, so Vanessa, if you could help me out.
Absolutely. Matt.
Hey, y'all. It's Matt Malloy, he/him pronouns, future get engaged member, and I work at the Queen and Beer Hall, and I'm not sure.
We'll move on to staff. How about Olivia?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm staff to the commission. John?
Hi, everyone. I'm John Hoy. I use he/him pronouns. I'm staff to the planning commission.
And I'll wrap this up. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Vanessa Murdock. I use she/her pronouns. I too am staff to the commission, and I will turn it back to Michaela.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anybody signed up to give public comment yet, Vanessa?
We do not.
All right.
So we can move to our first, our subarea planning agenda.
All right. So I want to warmly welcome Erica Bush and Jessie London from the Office of Planning and Community Development. Thank you for joining. They will provide us with an update on their respective subarea planning work. We briefed on this work in November of last year, and we have an hour for this agenda item needing to wrap up by around 4:15. Welcome, Erica and Jessie. I will pass it off to you. And Jessie, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Jessie London, yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for having us, everyone that's online, everyone that's in the room. I'm Erica Bush. As mentioned, I'm with Office of Planning and Community Development. As you previously met me when we came some time ago to talk to you all, but we've kind of made some strides in our subarea planning work, so we're super excited to bring that to you all today. We are going to speak quite briefly about each of the subarea plans that we're working on today, so I apologize for that, but we have a lot to cover, so we wanted to make sure that we touched on everything that we could. So I'm going to give a little brief introduction to the subarea planning process overall to start us off, and then I'm going to speak to some developments that have occurred in the downtown subarea plan and then pass it off to Jessie to speak to Northgate and Capitol Hill first. And Jessie is going to share. No, it's fine. So can you guys online? I'm hoping that what I see is what you see. Can you guys see our presentation? Okay. Okay, cool.
Yes.
Every time I go to fullscreen, it exits me out of the.
I feel like this is like a problem in this.
Apologies.
All good. So as mentioned, Jessie and I are the subarea planning team. Thank you for having us here today. We have been working on these plans since September, but they have been underway for significantly longer than that, just within open CDs or getting a brief kind of like base understanding of what the department as a whole hopes to accomplish with these plans. So that's where we are. So just to root us in what subarea plans are, they are rooted in the comprehensive plan, which you all know very well. The Seattle Comprehensive Plan, as you know, is a roadmap for where the city as a whole will go over the next 20 years, and then within the subarea plan, it establishes these regional growth centers, which were previously urban growth centers, that will collectively encompass a large portion of the designated both job and housing growth over that next 20 years. And so for these specific regional areas, we do focused planning efforts to ensure that the vision that the community holds for these concentrated areas is reflective as that growth happens. So that and the difference, of course, from the comprehensive plan to the subarea planning or regional center growth areas is really that it is a focused geography. Each of this plan, each of these plans are focused on particular areas, and while they're grounded in the comprehensive plans, policies, and approach, they get to a much more finite level of detail about elements that would respond to the needs particularly of that community. So just to remind everyone in the room who may or may not heard us the last time we came to speak with you, there's two phases of these subarea plans. We are in the first phase, which is tackling downtown Capitol Hill first, Hill and Northgate, which will, is underway and will wrap sometime depending on legislative process in 2026, we're expecting. And then the Phase Two plans will begin on a rolling basis as those are adopted, which will include South Bay, Union, Uptown, and University District. There is discussion of whether there would also be a Ballard Regional Center, which has not been currently resourced, but is in conversation. Waiting for Jessie to correct me.
Oh. It's in the draft plan, and I assume that that would be adopted as far as the draft plan, but we are not funded to work on that.
Okay. So with that, I wanted to mention some topics that we are hearing across the first phases of all of our plans, and so I would say that it's, these are topics of conversation you'll hear over and over again, but are just general concerns that multifamily housing-sized units are not being developed currently, and those that are are extremely cost prohibitive. So one of the, these are also things we'll be trying to find solutions for and would love to hear your feedback. Safety is on top of mind in all areas, particularly as it relates to downtown, but in a lot of our commercial areas, as we're seeing the change in commercial use, we're seeing lack of utilization and activation of our commercial areas, which is causing safety concerns in addition to the level of those in need that is growing within our city. We are also hearing loud and clear that people across Seattle, particularly in these areas, really want to see their fellow Seattleites cared for and have increased access for additional social services and basic amenities like fresh rooms, like access to clean water, like mental health services and substance abuse services in every regional center. There is a lack of meaningful retail support that addresses equity issues and keeps long-term tenants in place. We are seeing displacement, not just in a residential capacity, but also in a retail capacity, that retailers have historically provided a lot of social services in our communities. They've taken care of community. They've welcomed people into their space. They've entered places, and as increased pricing for those commercial spaces occur, we lose those tenants and we lose the general overarching services that they provide to their community. And then I would say that there is also concern about the maintenance and continued development of open space as we densify, so a key portion of a reason why the PSRC requires that we do these regional plans is to denote how we will absorb continued growth, and there is an imbalance between our focused growth and the number of open spaces coming online. It used to be that we really sought to have an X number of open space acres per X number of residents with sort of a tenant urban planning, and we've been told by the Parks Department, that's just not physically possible anymore. We cannot produce the amount of parks and open space that we previously thought was applicable and reasonable in our urban spaces, so we are needing to be more creative and think really more deeply about how we are taking care of the existing open spaces that we have available for our residents. So this is a slide just talking about the process that we're currently undergoing, particularly for the downtown plan, but in some capacity in all three plans. There are key topic areas that the PSRC has required that we do and discuss within these documents. They range from environment and climate action to land use, housing economy, transportation, and public services. And then through the process of that we've been undergoing for the previous few months is doing a technical analysis of our existing conditions around those topic areas while also engaging with community on them and kind of molding together that technical information and what we're hearing from community, which is then guiding how we're structuring or looking to structure our plan moving forward. So as you can see, these actions such as, you know, housing for all or sustainable systems that funding spaces for art, they intermix across different elements of the PSRC environment, so if you're talking about housing, you might be talking about space for art while also talking about a sustainable system of funding, while also talking about, you know, creating recreational space for multiple uses and demographics, and so we are looking to frame this plan not specifically in those PSRC topic areas, but instead looking to themes that are emerging from our community engagement and centering goals and policies that meet those. So we'll be able to point to how we are responding to the PSRC topic areas, but when we come back to you with an actual draft, we're sort of giving you a heads up that it won't be the housing chapter. It will be one of our themes, and it'll talk to elements that are going to fit into a number of topic areas that are really more in response to areas that community is focused on. So I'm going to dive into downtown a little bit now, and again, as I mentioned, we're going to be very brief, so there's a lot more to chew on, but we thought we would just bring some sort of critical elements that have come to the surface thus far in our work. So timelines-wise, as mentioned, you know, we've really been listening and learning regarding key stakeholders and those identified through our racial equity toolkit since 2023, before Jessie and I even came on board, and holding stakeholder meetings with those identified within the RED analysis. We had our first full-fledged public workshop in February of 24, and since then have really been working on assembling those technical reports. We are now starting to craft a vision. We've done an internal workshop and are having additional sort of key stakeholder conversations to test the themes and elements that have come out of engagement, and then we'll have a second workshop at the end of September, which we're happy to share with all of you, where we'll be both sharing back with the community our technical findings and Phase One engagement, but also starting to elevate that draft vision and draft goals that will shape policies into the fall. We have a draft plan being circulated for annual departmental review later this fall and a public draft plan presented to the public in early 2024. So this is like a little snapshot of what's been done today. So as mentioned, there's been a process where we want to honor past conversations, so there was an extensive effort done to review what planning efforts have occurred in and around downtown for the past few years and were underway when this planning process started. So things like the Seattle Transportation Plan, you know, the CID action frameworks, the, there's just, there's dozens of plans that have touched downtown, and so there was a lot of work just to kind of categorize and follow through that information. Then we started with some key RED-focused conversations. Those included conversations with you, pop-ups at events, there were artist-led documentation of certain festivals across downtown, and then there were some small-scale focused conversations with arts organizations with those that work in housing, in employment, and again, with those who serve youth versus youth themselves. And as mentioned, then we had the public workshop at Hereby Ashi Place and had some really focused district-level conversations with stakeholders in Belt Town and the CID who are facing some particular residential challenges, just given the land uses in those areas. And then what's happening right now is we're having some follow-up key conversations with agencies such as Seattle Parks Foundation, or Seattle Center, Office of the Waterfront, sort of those who have King County big sort of footprints in downtown. And yeah, and then we'll flow into the workshop and through final outreach, of course, and review of that draft. So some engagement outcomes to date. I don't think a lot of these will come as a surprise to you all, but there's a large concern for safety amongst our downtown residents. There's a desire to improve neighborhood quality and services that serve families. There's a need for the diversity of housing. Seattle has an incredibly old sort of oversaturation of studio and one better and very few of anything of greater scale than that, and our data is reflecting that in addition to what people are telling us and saying is a challenge. There's an ongoing conversation and challenge of seismic retrofits, particularly in the CID with the level of unreinforcementary buildings that we have and wanting to retain the historic character of that neighborhood. We also have just more affordable housing across all sectors, but with those enclosed parks and major resources to conserve those living in that affordable house. There's also feeling of a need for health and safety and transportation to downtown businesses. Businesses are really saying that those who work for them can't afford to live here, and that's a challenge. They can't. They can't respond to the needs of their businesses without having that workforce housing available. That there's a much too much red tape to opening and operating businesses in Seattle, that it's really a challenge, and that there is still a great desire to open new business in downtown, which and, but that there's some real impediments to doing so. TIs or tenant improvements are extremely expensive, and it's really challenging to go through those processes of permitting. And there's also differing variations of regulatory frameworks across our neighborhoods. Some of our preservation districts are in, they're there for critical reasons, but they're causing additional challenges for those operating smaller, particularly smaller-scale businesses in those districts that we need to find means of better supporting them through. Our traffic downtown is really diminished from pre-pandemic levels still today. We're only seeing a percent, you know, we're not seeing pre-pandemic levels downtown yet, and that is a challenge for our retailers. That we need to be more strategic about our priority corridor investments, that there's there's only so much energy kind of in downtown right now, and we should really focus on the areas where we want to sort of create hubs of hub energy. Then we spoke at length to our arts and cultural community, and there's also a significant process underway through the downtown activation plan, through the mayor's office, as well as the Office of the Waterfront, who also created their own cultural plan, and so we were able to kind of utilize that feedback as well, that the city as a whole really needs a commitment to the arts. We have to be much more vocal about how much we care for the arts and that it's something that is at the heart of the city. We need to dedicate more space to artists and affordable space to artists for all kinds, not just standard sort of like paint and fine arts, but we need performance spaces. We need spaces where we can practice. We need music spaces. Like we have to think about the arts in a more holistic way in providing opportunities for access to spaces to accomplish that. Artists aren't fairly compensated for their work, and we don't really think holistically about the gig economy that surrounds artist world. You know, we, we are focused, I think, in our affordable housing systems, for example, of meeting a certain percentage AMI and having paperwork that designates what AMI you are, but when you're a gig worker as an artist, demonstrating that capacity is very challenging when your income may be coming from 20, 30, 50 different places a year. It's very hard to legitimately sort of describe how much you're able to pay in your housing prices. Construction projects are long and disruptive for artists as well. It's really hard for them to show their work if people don't feel they can access galleries, particularly in Pioneer Square and the construction that's been happening there. And that we should be doing more to center racial equity and bring black indigenous artists back into downtown and to elevate their expression in our built environment. Real quickly, I know I'm probably giving up too much time. We heard a lot about just needing space to be where they feel comfortable and they don't feel like they're being pushed along, that they're unwanted. We have a lot of our space downtown in a sort of peat and play environment where they're not free and they're not just openly, we have, I think it might be on our slides, we have absolutely no playfields or open recreational spaces downtown. We have four. We have four playgrounds. We have very little space that are just flexible and accessible to youth. And that families overall need to feel that their children will be comfortable coming to downtown. We heard a lot from service providers for youth and from families that they, there are a lot of programs and sort of cultural amenities downtown that they're uncomfortable with their kids accessing right now. They don't feel comfortable allowing them to take light rail or buses by themselves to go to the CID or Pioneer Square to participate in camps, in educational programming. And that's a really big impediment. And then last of all, that downtown really has a lot of identities. If you talk to someone in Belltown versus someone in Pioneer Square versus the CID, they have a very different perception of what downtown is and what it means to them. And making sure that we continue to be respectful of what is what that may be down to. So part of our racial equity toolkit process is creating these draft outcomes. These are actually just a few of them, but we then take these outcomes and they inform our theme development. So for example, the housing draft right now is that downtown offers worst housing options and support for people are in their lives without creating cost burden. For arts and culture, it's a thriving creative community, lives in, works in, and shapes the downtown experience. So these are just sort of like the core R E T elements that then feed into our future themes. So just some quick key technical findings to date. There are different definitions of downtown when you review certain documents. So our downtown boundaries reflect a smaller number of residents than you'll read in some other reports. A lot of people speak to center city instead of downtown, which encompasses components of South Lake Union or First Hill and Capitol Hill. So sometimes a larger number is thrown around. So I just wanted to mention that since you're all planners, that our boundary, which is, you know, Denny down to the CID, is just under 50,000 residents. A interesting factoid about that is that while we're exceeding, we're exceeding our growth targets, greater, Diana said, yes, so greater downtown, meaning that we also include the CID, which I think in some people's mind is often a separate portion of the city. So downtown is on, it's on its current trajectory, will be the largest urban center for residential population by 2044. It will outpace Capitol Hill and First Hill as a residential hub. Another interesting fact is that over 75% of our downtown housing units have been built since 2000. They vary residential land use. Our median age of the housing we have downtown is 2011. So when we are talking about the services and the adjacent amenities that our residents need in downtown, a lot of it is because we haven't had a lot of time to build out a network that supports our residents in this portion of our city. It's been heavily zoned, heavily designed for as a commercial center, not as a residential center. And so we have a lot to do to really adapt this environment to meet that growing population. So just some interesting demographic information. This why doesn't come as a surprise, but there is an extreme difference across our downtown in regards to both its racial and social equity index and our median incomes. The northern portion of downtown is exceptionally different than the southern half of downtown. And I'm sure you cannot read the legends on either of these maps, but hopefully the colors will sort of like get somewhat to what they're pointing to, which is that our, our northern portion is really almost at the lowest or second lowest end of the racial social equity need index, while the southern portion of our downtown is at the highest. So those, we are, we are really trying to serve a very diverse group of people when we're talking about downtown. The CID has our, our largest at-risk population for displacement. It has our greatest air quality issues across the city of Seattle. It has some of our largest concentrated elderly populations. And then you move to the northern end of downtown where we have some of our highest income earners in the city. So serving those populations within a walking distance of each other is, is pretty unique. We also have public spaces that are trying to accomplish a lot. We only have nine parks that offer water access and only three public restaurants in our public spaces. Yeah. Just want to reemphasize that. And despite continued efforts, we are losing canopy coverage as our, as our heat island effect continues to become more pronounced. Downtown vacancies in public lands are a challenge but an opportunity. We in downtown have, as you can kind of see in that chart, we have a really large percentage of vacant parcels when you look across the different urban centers. We're only second to Northgate, which is very surprising given the kind of land use that we're seeing in, in a much more suburban environment to a highly concentrated urban environment. We also have a very large percentage of publicly owned parcels in our southern downtown. And so while that is creating quite a bit of the challenge of sort of an underutilized environment that we're seeing today, it's also a pretty big opportunity. We have a lot of land, a lot of space and a lot of public amenity area or publicly owned area that we could be reorienting to serve our population much better. Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Jessica.
Cool. Thanks. I'm going to call a bit of an audible here and ask, would you prefer that we pause for questions for that piece? And then go through the other one and then pause again, or would you rather?
See if we have initial questions.
Okay.
And then, and because our second agenda item, I want to be mindful of your time, but we don't have a super hard stop at 4:15. So if we go to 4:20, it's okay, as long as you both are available. I know you need to scoot out. So, Mikael, I don't know if you want to ask if there are questions from commissioners to pop them, pop their names in the chat?
Yeah. Please drop your name in the chat and I'll call on people.
Yeah, I'm just absorbing. It's like, it's a lot of good information and, you know, and then we're going to go talk about Northgate. So it's like, I need like a little bit of a transition, but I don't want to totally blow up the time, you know?
To the honest question about, I have seen the term greater downtown used in that as top of work from life from 2019. And I think that did include South Lake Union uptown and both hills.
Oh, wow.
So it was, that was big, but, but great. I mean, but it's obviously has a colloquial meaning as well. So, but yeah. But your point stands from Denny to the freeway to water.
We have no questions in the chat. So Lauren, do you want to go?
Sure. Thank you. I am interested in kind of this stat that you were saying, Erica, around downtown being on pace to be our biggest residential center. Could you like just talk more about those projections and is it coming from like zoning capacity? Or just because that's, and I really also appreciate what you said too of like, most of the residential presence in downtown has been since 2000. And it feels like a little bit validating to be like, okay, cool. Like we've only have, you know, a little less than 25 years to try to adapt. And I'm, I'm just thinking about how heavily weighted we are from a commercial and office and then thinking about South downtown as like a real kind of public and civic campus. It was just really helpful for me to like have you say all of that, but then to be like, wow, we're, we're on pace to just continue really ramping up the number of residents, residents that live here, which is great, but I'm wondering where that comes from.
Yeah. So a lot of, some of it is designated within a COE plan. Like there, there's, there is zoning capacity in downtown. As I mentioned, that's a key element of it. There's also sort of the political identification of trying to focus how like TOD or housing adjacent to our largest transit investments, which largely will occur in downtown. And the fact that like, if we want to see additional, I would say high-density housing growth, this is a logical location for that.
Yes.
I think too, there's a like consistent notion that we are never going to see the same levels of like office-based utilization that we previously did within our commercial centers. And there's been a consistent, like very local desire for us to be, adapt our urban center to be more diverse and infused and residential uses sort of critical to the functionality of the center and economic.
I have a follow-up point that I'd like to ask around that. So if we're funneling most of our residential growth into downtown over the next planning period, and we are going to achieve that mostly through high-rise and pretty dense multifamily development, what tools are at your disposal to make sure that we create income-restricted housing while we take advantage of that building boom? I want to think of downtown as a place where people of all income levels have a choice to live downtown if they want. And I worry that if we don't have an intentional strategy to make sure that we protect, create and then preserve some affordability along with that, that we will not, downtown will not be a place where people with, with lower incomes can live. So just curious what you're looking at as your strategies for, for that piece of the downtown plan.
I mean, given our current like economics, it's, it's probably more complicated than it's ever been because the cost to develop is so high. What I will say is back to the point about the degree of public ownership within our downtown. That's really where our greatest opportunity lies. How can we reallocate the government or public-owned parcel, publicly-owned buildings to serve that population and be strategic about how we serve? And create affordable housing because there isn't the funding to acquire land. We have, as a, as a city, basically we're being told that we need to use existing publicly-owned opportunities. So a lot of our focus will be on how, how we better utilize what we already have. And then really thinking strategically about, I think, that infill potential. There are some, there are new innovative building technologies that allow for higher density development on much smaller parcels. You know, CLT particularly, and changing our codes that diminish the need for side setbacks or other challenging means of not being able to utilize everything that's available. So, and kind of looking at how we should be like having a consistency of building frontages without these, these like sort of vacancies or unutilized areas that collectively add up to be a lot and could be housing a lot of people. And how to re-resource our partnerships and affordable housing to do so, which is what Jesse and I need to figure out to do.
Thank you. I, I've not seen any other questions or any other names in the chat box. I think we are good to move on to the Northgate presentation.
Cool. Thank you. So this is a, is a rather artsy outline of the Northgate Regional Center boundary. It's, if you recall, centered around the, the former mall site. It includes the light rail station sort of to the south there. I-5 goes right down the middle of it and then there's a, a kind of awkward stretch up to the northwest to bring in the like, the job density from the Northwest Medical Center at U-Dub. So that's just some context setting there. And then the reason it does that little reach is because we need, we, you need certain density of jobs and housing in order to qualify for a PSRC designation, which we want to do. So the schedule is fairly similar to that of downtown. It started at Interstate around the same time. So we're also through one phase of engagement. Most of the way through our, our technical research. We have a few more outreach kinds of events, although we won't have the same number of like fully public workshops. I don't, I think we'll have one less. But as, as with all the other plans, there will be a little bit of a transportation-specific outreach after the levy. We'll have a little touch base with the groups that we talked to in the first round with our vision and, and higher, high-level goals. And I'll, and I'll revisit who those folks were in their slide. And then similarly, we'll have, it's a downtown, we'll have a release of the public draft early next year. It will be the first time you all see a completed version of that draft and can provide more substantial comment. So yeah, the first round of engagements that, that ran, you know, end of last year, early this year. It was pretty heavily driven by our racial equity toolkit outcomes. We worked really hard to identify previously underserved communities and/or organizations that represent that communities in this, in this area. Rather, and I'm not comprehensive list, but, but some of our, I'd say like the majority of the groups that we talked to are listed here. That included a number of in-language focus groups as, as necessary and focused on a lot more of people who work in the service sectors throughout the community that I think have a, we have harder time reaching and planning processes traditionally. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to, we'll reach back up to them a little, a little bit lighter touch, but just to make sure we're on the right path with our vision statements and all that in the next couple of months. Yeah. And so outcomes from that, first phase of engagements. Folks are, are pretty excited about Thornton Creek and Beaver Pond and the, the beavers therein. They really are craving the, the replacement for the sort of gathering and leisure space that the mall used to provide and now kind of leaves a literal hole in that set of needs. Walkability, as you might have mentioned, generally quite, quite, quite poor. I'll, there's some more technical observation of that in another slide. But yeah, that's giant blocks, poor sidewalk connectivity, you know, it was. You know, it was one of the, one of the first post-war when mall developed sites that are very car oriented. So it's just, and it, it's made it, it's made it quite difficult to capitalize fully on some of its better public assets, like the light rail station and, and open spaces and things like that. You, you have to drive to get there or you have to walk dangerously to get there. And, and I think big picture, folks are, are ready to see what is next. That I, I mentioned that there's a lot of redevelopment going on at the, at the mall site. A lot of that has slowed pretty substantially over the last year to a lot of the same supply side cost issues that Erica alluded to earlier in the, in the broader development community. So people want to find out what that next new, what that new identity is going to be, what it's, what it's going to look like physically, functionally. And, and they, they hope that that includes some of that same assets that people are desiring throughout the city. You know, more affordable housing, more diverse housing stock, more transportation options and the like. Yeah, that was, I said before, driven by our racial equity toolkit outcomes. These are pretty iterative. We've changed them a couple of times based on what we've heard. They'll probably be tweaked a little bit again. I, I really like these, this, this set of, of, of red outcomes. Because they're pretty explicit about impacts on BIPOC communities and, and, and develop as specifically as is practical metrics that we can use to track success over the lifetime of the plans. So that's something that we look forward to do during implementation here in the years down the line. Moving on to the, our technical analyses, I, I mentioned the, the super blocks. There's an interesting depiction of that here. Most of the blocks, the vast majority of the blocks are, are three times or, or more the size of an ideal urban, urban block. You can kind of see hints of, of a more urban grid in certain parts of the neighborhood. But it's, it's really, even if you're just, even if you're driving, you know, walking, driving, biking, whatever, you, you have to go around a, a lot of, a lot of big blocks in order to get where you need to go. And that's obviously not ideal for efficient transportation system. And not to mention, we work pretty closely with S on these projects. And it's something that they identified through an expansion of some of their work through the Seattle Transportation Plan is an inventory of missing pieces of transportation infrastructure, particularly sidewalks or, or, or substandard sidewalks. In addition to those that are just not, not there. Then identified a tier, a priority tier system for replacing them in the capital group of plants in, in, in future years. And we'll be, as I said, SDOT will be doing a, some outreach after the levy to try to further prioritize those or more specific about designing and implementation or that. And then of course, all of the pavement means has a, has a number of environmental implications. Heat island affects pretty strongly in certain parts around the neighborhood, not surprisingly in and around I-5. And plenty of localized flooding risk in the long term, well, and in the near term really, that underpass gets flooded near the Thornton Creek daylighting. That's, that, those will often back up as, as well during certain next year or during heavier rainy seasons. Talked about pace of redevelopment slowing. That's about 1,700 residential units currently in the pipeline. Not as many as we probably would have expected a year ago, but plenty of, I think another half dozen of these projects on, on the former mall site that are entitled, but not yet fully permitted or having broken ground. Although there were a few marquee projects that you may have heard had broken ground a couple of weeks ago now. That pipeline is exclusively rental housing. Again, not a huge surprise, the, the, what's called the construction defect liability insurance like makes building condos like exceptionally expensive these days. That's like been a problem really throughout the country and particularly on the West Coast. So it's, we're, you know, been diving into some performa analyses of building, housing that is intended to be owned in these urban contexts. And that's proven to be like extremely difficult to make that allow. So something worse in that we need to try to figure out of policy approaches to alleviate in, at least in the short term. These projects include a couple of significant affordable housing projects. There's this Seattle Housing Authority redevelopment of the Northgate Commons just north of the mall site, as well as the Bridge Housing Project. That's a couple hundred units on the, on the park and ride sits now at the northern cap of that. And notably, the, the newer market rate units are expected to increase average rents. And I think our economists have some pretty serious concerns that those are going to be units that existing residents are going to struggle to afford. So I, I, I think that creating that diverse housing stock and, and continuing to emphasize and create opportunities for housing and the housing authority to invest in affordable projects here is going to continue to be critical. More on that kind of development side, pretty healthy jobs to residents ratio. So plenty of opportunity to work, but I, the, the labor pool is, at least relative to the rest of Seattle, pretty relatively low educational attainment and, and, and training. So a couple of options there policy wise. And you, you could either sort of say like, hey, we know that the, that the food services and, and things like that are going to be replaced as the mall site redevelops. And that's going to be a decent match for, for, for the less skilled labor pool. Or, or you could say like, hey, there's also a couple of industries that are succeeding, such as healthcare in the immediate area and an opportunity to, to match some of the less trained workforce with educational services like at the, the college, which is just outside of the boundary of the south west there. To, to be able to prepare them to, to working that.
Jessica and I asked for clarification. So you're saying, I see that incomes are far below the city and the region in Northgate. And then you're saying that there's lower educational attainment. Are you saying that there's a mismatch between the density of jobs and the level of jobs at Northgate and the people that live in proximity?
Not necessarily. I, I, I think that it could be, it, it could be a good match if, if we grow in the right areas. So I, so I guess what I'm saying is like, we're expecting retail to come back to this area. Maybe not in the same volume or same exact types as it was before this site decided to redevelop, but they are expected to be a similar class of jobs to people who live here now and are qualified for. Yeah, I could currently, I want to say it's like one in four people who live there also work there. It used to be higher than that. And we, we are assuming that is related to the, what the mall jobs provided. So that's, that's, that's one pathway to making sure that these people have jobs nearby that match their skillset. But I'm, I'm also like pointing to this opportunity to enhance their skills and get them hiring jobs as well. Into Seattle before they live there. More, no, that's it. So yeah, I'll pause here for questions.
Um, I am feeling a little overwhelmed by all of the.
Oh, was it?
Uh, this just feels.
Feeling that. Yeah, go ahead.
It, this feels like really important planning information and I, I'm not, I'm feeling a little like, I have so much to say. There's so many questions and I'm sure others on the call feel the same way. So I think, uh, let's just use this for a little bit of like clarifying questions. We'll move on to the next piece, but I do just want to acknowledge that I feel like, I feel like you're presenting some really important information that we'd like to weigh in on. And we might need to like to Vanessa to figure out how to, uh, how to, how to manage that in the time that we have for today. I am looking at the queue here. Does anybody for clarifying questions? I see. I see Lauren, but she is asking if other people want to say something first. Deanna, do you have a, do you want to go?
I guess to, thanks for that, Michaela. I think I share the sentiment that both presentations, the Silvery Plan and this Northgate information is incredibly helpful, super valuable, commend you. And, and thank you for providing us a succinct of presentation as you've been able to share with us here for today's purposes. But probably a similar sentiment, Michaela, that there's so much. I probably was still trying to wrap my head around even for the previous presenters. And I'm just being able to synthesize what I wanted to mention. So I don't know if right now is the appropriate time for me to comment a couple of quick thoughts on the previous presentation or if we should focus on, on Northgate first. And I'll wait until we finish kind of the Northgate comments and come back to those.
Let's do that. Let's see if, uh, we're, we're losing ZO by ZO. I think folks are feeling an, an interest in absorbing the information before they respond. Rose does not have any questions. She's still absorbing, it's a lot of information. Nick has a question.
I'm also still absorbing. This is a lot of great information. It seems like with all of the urban centers, except for Ballard, of course, if that's adopted in the final plan, they either intersect or butt I-5 or 99. I'm curious in some of that early outreach, what, what strategies you all are thinking about in terms of air quality or noise impacts, especially as you're looking to increase kind of the families that would live in these areas. And those are really important considerations, I think. So I didn't see that, at least in the downtown discussion. But I saw, I think, when you flashed up the slide on the racial equity tool outcome examples, it did seem to have at least something in Northgate speaking to some of the noise and air pollution there. So curious if you could speak more to that. Michaela, if that's not a clarifying question, which I understand it's not, you can also just say, let's, let's address that offline.
You already asked it. Let's go ahead and give him an, an opportunity to respond. And I'm curious about the answer as well.
Well, not coincidentally, all three of these areas have within them some significant tree canopy issues along with some of their overly paved spaces. I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit in the first hill presentation. But I think that is for, environmentally, that's kind of a, a big deal and something we'll have to emphasize. I know that OC has a tree equity plan that we are yet to tie into. And I, I, we also have a little bit more work to do with like the public space team that works with SDOT in their street tree program. So I, that's, that's one pathway we're working towards, but having like this, as much time as we would have liked to this point.
I'd also say that we like are just starting to think about if there are mechanisms for building code that would be responsive to like increased basically like HVAC systems, soundproofing, like having some more focused attention on those areas immediately adjacent to I-5. Because in certain areas, they are possibly going to see significantly more density. So what we, can we do within our built environment to change that without knowing that we probably can't put up giant sound walls across the extent of the roadway systems that vibrate these areas? And then look in downtown, you know, there's, there's a lot of interest in exploring the future of the lit I-5 project. And that has its own challenges. But we are actually hearing a lot more interest than we suspected in looking to letting opportunities to support additional green space and to try to reduce some of the impacts of I-5 in our dense areas.
Nick, do you want to follow up with your clarifying question?
Yeah, just on the timeline related to some of the maybe projects or some of the actual code implementation work. The timeline showed craft plan and policies. Does that also include any corresponding map amendments or zoning changes that would need to be made in order to actually enact some of that vision that's established through the Silvery Planning? Or what's the timeline for those changes?
Good question. So we are not really resourced, Eric and I are two people working on six plans. We're, we're not really like resourced to like simultaneously be bringing zoning packages to council. We do have like a full long-range planning team that will, that will be responsible for that as we start to adopt these plans and add them to the comp plan in '26. So, so that, we don't have like specifics on that. I guess that'd be something we have to talk to like Jeff Blument about, like when, when they imagine having the time to do that, but.
Yeah, so generally speaking, the, the assumption is that once the plans are adopted, a portion of our office will roll into the implementation and the zoning actions and, and code changes in accordance with that. While we then move on to the next three plans, if that makes sense. So Phase Two would happen while implementation of elements of Phase One are implemented. So we would hope '27.
Yeah, I mean, in that world, they could prepare, they could, they could prepare to do it while we were. But I, I can't, I don't want to speak for the vision.
All right, Jamie.
Uh, I just had a clarifying question of, um, the Northwest Hospital was included because of the Job Center. And I'm kind of curious why North Seattle College isn't included for a similar reason? Or kind of what was the thought process behind that boundary?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. These were drawn in the nineties, so I can't necessarily flashback to like the mentality of those people who did that. But like, uh, the, the institute, like the big institutional footprints, they're like, I, I think sometimes they're seen as like, you, you, you have like a little, if there's like a major institutional overlay there, there's a, there's a little bit less flexibility in terms of like what we can do on a, on a more micro scale on a future land use map, for example. They also have like fewer public streets to cut through them. So maybe there was like less of an opportunity they sought to, to channel the federal transportation dollars to, to those sites. But, but, but that being said, you're not the first person who brought that up. I, I, I think that someone from the mayor's office like reminded us recently that, that there were comp plan comments at the same question. So that's, yeah, that's something we can consider. I, I think that we can't do it until the, we wouldn't be able to do it unless we amended the comp plan EIS, which uses certain regional center boundaries. So it would, we could do it, it would take time. We wouldn't do it as part of this process, but it is absolutely something that if sufficient like interest and resources could, could happen. I, I know that like, for example, the uptown boundary is probably going to be tweaked depending on the location of the, of the, the final location of the light rail station, for example. So it, it can be on the table.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about like the connectivity too of like the pedestrian bridge is connecting through North Seattle College and like, and how can we think about that region as a whole, considering that not just jobs, but commuters and folks who live in there? Yeah, just how can we have a holistic approach to the region?
And the colleges typically also have a major institution master plan that underlies their kind of use. But I think that pedestrian bridge is a game changer for the way people move around Northgate and the way people think of employment centers. And so if you're not in communication with the colleges, strongly encourage that.
Yeah, they were part of our, of our, of our outreach. Yeah, we, we, we don't, we didn't, we weren't that strict about the boundary when it came to outreach. It's just like. when we're communicating, like who qualifies for what types of investments. That's really when we bring it out, but like, yeah, it's not really meant for that.
I do want to do a time check. We haven't heard from Deanna. I have some more questions on Northgate. We haven't heard from you about First Hill, Capitol Hill. What is your availability to go longer than 4:15? We could also explore you coming back at a later time for us to have a follow-up conversation.
I could go beyond 4:15.
Are you sure, Erica?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, as long as I'm like out the door at 4:30.
Okay.
Does that give you guys enough time for more time? Do, do you want to continue to allow commissioners to ask questions and engage in discussion, or do you guys want to get on to Capitol Hill?
Uh.
First Hill.
I'm sure we can, for some Capitol Hill. If Erica can tell us 15 more minutes.
Okay.
I could also do that.
Well, why don't you guys move on to presenting through, through the fun, the next one, and then we can pick up discussion as time permits afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, First Hill, Capitol Hill Regional Center. Similar to downtown in the sense that it has like, I mean, the name even implies that there are several sorts of neighborhoods within here within this subarea that have pretty dramatically different sets of conditions. Yeah, Capitol Hill, First Hill, the Pike Pine Corridor, even like 15th Avenue and other corridors that are so popular and have their own identities. Just to set some of that geographic context there. This plan's schedule is a little, a bit behind the other two. We don't expect a draft plan until closer to the summer. We are basically in the middle, middle end, middle of our, of our first round of community engagement still. We won't have our first public workshop until the middle of next month. It's tentatively September 12th, but yeah, a couple people who need to buy into that still before that's official. So we'll, we'll be in touch. We'll be communicating when that is finalized. Yeah, we don't get our technical research analysis and our, our first drafts and reports until tomorrow. So I'll have a little bit less to say about that in this section of the presentation. Similar to the other plans, SDOT has a post levy outreach period where they'll dig into stuff that's sort of beyond the STP and the capital projects that they listed there. Yeah, I think that's, I want to say about that. So, so my engagement report is a little bit more forward looking than some of the other plans. But we are working with the Capitol Hill Eco District and Seattle Metropolitan Urban League to using an existing community organization that is, has a lot of well-established connections throughout the neighborhood and has been incredibly helpful in setting up our focus groups. They conducted a tour on their own. We have a public workshop coming up, pop-up events, and we'll have, we have a public survey that is launched, although rather recently, and you'll see that in like the Capitol Hill blog and things like that shortly, I'm sure. Let's see, talked about the workshop. The focus groups were focused on transportation, housing, arts and culture, and the environment. We'll have a few more one-on-one interviews, particularly when we get into like doing our financial analyses for the economics report and looking into like potential real estate development trends. Yes, the survey, the survey is active. Yeah.
We can share it.
Yeah, I can, I can share it after. I don't, I probably should have just moved it here. But anyways, so we, yeah, reached a similar volume of groups that we identified in the Northgate Plan and had, also had a similar approach in that it was, they were, the groups that we've reached out to and organizations that we focused on were driven by the, the red outcomes. Let's see, looking at feedback so far, obviously like the transit and walkability, particularly in the, in the Capitol Hill portion of the subarea, is quite strong and people approve of, to, quite, quite positively. First, the First Hill, like major arterials, so the Boran and Madison and parts of 12th, much less comfortable for pedestrians, bikes, worse green space, worse tree canopy, you know, still pretty dense. And with the G-line opening bottom one from now, that's kind of a game changer for that part of the neighborhood, although plenty of complaints about the length of time the construction took for the past couple of years that we've heard from the community. Tree car, pretty divisive. I'd say like pretty, pretty down the middle. There are people who, who find it useful and there are people who find it to be like completely useless and like way too slow or, or just needs to be better integrated with the rest of the system, i.e. in most cases connected to the, to the South of the Union Streetcar. It sounds like they are exploring a business improvement area or perhaps expanding one of the existing ones in Capitol Hill. And, oh, and we know that the Office of Economic Development is kind of walking in through that process and along with a number of other community groups throughout the city. So I think that that's primarily for clean and safe type services, so that you're keeping the garbage out the streets and then providing an on-street pedestrian presence that kind of enhances safety through, through a clean and safe team of, you know, a dozen or more members, depending on the scale of the people who are interested, you know, businesses and property centers establishing that kind of entity. Pretty overwhelming compassion for the unhoused and a lot of advocates for services that support those, those residents. Public restrooms came up a lot here as well. Let's see, I think that covers my public outreach results. All the red outcomes, similar to downtown's organization, although without as much of a, of a arts-driven piece here, although, although we did have an arts focus group that definitely was an impactful conversation for, for us in our policy discussions. Okay, so like I said, we don't get our technical reports till tomorrow, so I can go over like a few things here that we've heard in, in the, in our research conversations before.
I want to mention one more engagement.
Please.
Item, which is that we heard a lot of focus on commercial displacement concerns in Capitol Hill as well.
Sure, yeah.
Retaining small-scale, local, the-owned businesses.
Yeah. And I can dovetail off that with some technical findings a little bit. I think that our economists sort of look at the 5%-ish retail vacancy rate. And I think initially think like that's not that bad for retail performance at that scale. However, when you think about where those vacancies are, a lot of them are pretty prime locations, Pike Pine Corridor. And recall that, as I'm sure you're all well aware, that the vacancy rate from the same subarea was less than 1%, you know, five, six, seven years ago. It is a pretty staggering change in spite of its like relative strong performance to maybe some of the other neighborhoods in the, in the city. So as many of you probably know, one of the densest residential neighborhoods on the, on the West Coast, high concentrations of high-rise and mid-rise zoning and also housing being allowed in most of the commercial corridors in the red and orange here as well. A little bit of discussion about, or well, I should say requests from property owners for pretty modest height increases along Olive Way, particularly around like Olive and like Bellevue-ish, where the old Starbucks is and some of those underutilized or straight up abandoned like properties along that part of the corridor. Kind of an interesting discussion. I think they're really only looking to go like 115 feet, which is kind of an awkward height for our standards, but kind of interesting. Housing stock, pretty, pretty old in certain parts of the neighborhood, particularly the Northeast. I think that some people look at that and think like that's, that's risk of turnover, redevelopment of those properties, the improvements, land value ratio being relatively low compared to the rest of the neighborhood. Staggering residential growth in terms of, I guess I was just looking at residential population growth for the past 15 years. That's, I think, the neighborhood has grown at 56% in terms of population over that period of time versus the city is only. So that's something that people are definitely feeling and wondering about density, how, how density can be allocated to other parts of the city in certain communities. Very skilled workforce, relative, you know, the opposite situation in Northgate. I'm not sure I've seen the neighborhood at this, observed a neighborhood at the scale that has a three quarters with a bachelor's degree or higher in my neighborhood planning history. So I, that was pretty interesting. I think many of them work at the healthcare. We can't really confirm this with the data that we have access to, but it's, it's likely that many of them work on the healthcare campuses here in the neighborhood. And if you tend to work more in like the service sectors, those people are living farther and farther away, according to our community study, some as far away as like the islands to find something that's affordable based with that, with those salaries and incomes in those industries.
And there was the statistic that 75% of the jobs that are located within Capitol Hill are within the healthcare industry.
Yeah, and primary transportation needs that we heard, access to downtown, crossing that freeway, very tricky, certain parts of the neighborhood. Plenty of sidewalk repair and in some pieces sidewalk widening needs that STP identified. I talked about the First Hill arterials not being the most pleasant places on earth. And a little bit of vulnerability to, I guess, the vulnerability to climate changes that we have observed are mostly economic in nature. And that's, and that is to say like, people who work in certain services, particularly like in a hot kitchen or have a more physically demanding jobs as temperatures increase, that those jobs become much less tenable, comfortable, you know, more, and become more difficult to hold. And then it talks about the tree canopy. There's, there's a little map here on the left that illustrates the tree canopy loss issue, which is particularly strong in the, you see all the pink in the southeast and the First Hill area. Some of that is just like the tree failure being higher and some of it is just redevelopment. That's kind of an anecdotal observation. I don't have like the data on that, but that's, that's what we've heard. And seismic vulnerabilities, that's kind of what the middle map is meant to illustrate. A lot of unreinforced masonry, particularly that Pike Pine Corridor. And yeah, vulnerable to dirtways. That's, how did I do? It's over 29. Oh, very fast. So sorry. I know you probably have a lot of questions. We can come back if you want, or we can like, you know, we have like reports that are like about our engagement and you'll see our technical reports, you know, when the, when we, the plans are closer to coming out in more detail. But yeah.
Could you drop the survey and drop?
True.
Do you guys have an ask of the planning commission? Like what's, what do you need from us? What do you, what were you hoping to get from us today?
I would say a big element that we're seeing is, is pretty literally Northgate is the displacement challenges. Like we see some of the highest displacement risk across the city in Northgate. And so if there are displacement policies or approaches that you all have seen in your work or study, we'd be really curious about those. That's one element. I know that there's also been a concern of the lack of access to the health services that exist in Capitol Hill for those that actually live in Capitol Hill. And if, in that regard, there's also been any kind of research or understanding that you've seen of how we bridge access to amenities sort of behind the gated walls of our health industry. And then I would say any knowledge as it pertains to funding additional greenery in our rights of way, or work with STP, or the parks, how we, how we infuse greenery into these urban areas that lack dedicated open spaces. Those are the top of mind.
Yeah, for, for me, the support for the more equity and anti-displacement components of, yeah, I think after, particularly after the comp plan, I just, I just want to like, I want the support for that to like be, to live throughout the lifetime of our part of the project and be impactful and beyond the grid's adoption. So that's something I think about a lot. And I think that the planning commission is well suited to.
Okay, Vanessa?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank our presenters and thank you for going 15 minutes over time. I really appreciate that. My suggestion is that when available, if we could have a slide deck that you spoke to, I will send that out to the commission and then I'll work with you both, figure out a time probably before the draft comes out, just to, to have a, a follow-up conversation. And I think with the commissioners able to review the materials in advance, we could make better use of the time.
Yeah, of course. Of course. We really appreciate your guys' thoughts.
Thank you for sharing.
Of course.
Thank you. It also sort of feels well-suited for maybe some of our committee time, Vanessa, if we wanted to digest and talk through it. Vanessa, just as we move into this new Teams format, are these meetings being recorded?
Yes, these meetings are being recorded and will be posted to the planning commission's YouTube channel. I'm looking at Olivia.
And linked up of our website.
Okay. I didn't even know we had a YouTube channel.
Thanks to Olivia, we do. And then just for the commissioners on the call, if, after this meeting, if you could let me know how the interface using Teams as opposed to Teams Live is working out for you. I know of one commissioner who's actually having more problems than with the Teams Live, so that would be helpful for us to know, so we can troubleshoot.
Okay. Sorry, folks. I know, I know Deanna and others had some comments and questions, and I think we will just pick those back up at a, at a later meeting. For those who serve on the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee with me, you know that we have been working on some material over the past few weeks. I think we're calling them papers of some sort. And that today, the intent is to bring all of the commissioners up to speed on the intent of these documents and to chart a path forward for the development of these pieces over the next five or six weeks. And we have an hour for this working session, and I think John is going to start us off.
I am.
Okay, great. You were on vacation when we talked about this, which is why I thought maybe there was a mis typo in the document, but glad to hear from you.
Came back and got right to work on it. Okay, so I just have a few slides. We're going to talk about the budget process overview first before Olivia gets into the housing part of this discussion. So I'm, I've been working on just a short So I'm, I've been working on just a short overview paper to help commissioners understand the city's budget process and how the city develops its budget annually. That, that process is actually starting very soon. The city has, city council has a select budget committee and they just announced at their meeting yesterday, their process for this year. So I will, I can actually send that presentation around after this meeting, but I've been preparing just a short paper to summarize the process and I have a few slides just to share the highlights with you. So next slide please. So just a few key bullet points for everyone to understand. The city of Seattle uses a biennial budget process. So the, it's updated every year, but it's kind of on a two-year cycle. So the, every other year is, is an update to the adopted budget. The city council exclusively focuses on creating a budget for two months every year. That will start in late September and go through late November. That process starts when the mayor transmits a proposed budget to the city council in mid to late September. So that will happen in about a month from now. And then the council from there, their job as defined by the city charter is to consider the mayor's proposed budget, listen to members of the public, and there are many opportunities for public engagement, elevate issues and propose changes that are deliberated by the entire council after robust community stakeholder engagement. So it's, it's a very long and robust process. Next slide please. Just there, they have summarized the process as a five-step process. Step one, as I described, is when the mayor delivers the proposed budget. CBO stands for Central Budget Office. Just for your information, and the council deliberations begin at that point. Step two is, is a series of budget hearings where CBO and the, and the various departments present their, their budgets. Central staff will present policy issues around all of the budget issues. And then there, there is a revenue forecast update that informs development of the budget. Step three is when the, the chair of the budget committee will present what's called a balancing package and that is taking into consideration, council member amendments and it's basically the council's version of the budget. And then step four, they, after considering all of the balancing package and the amendments, they will vote. And then step five is the final council action. And I have some dates in the process for each of these for you all, just to keep in mind. And we encourage you to follow this process as much as you want to. All the budget meetings are they're public, they're, they're online, they're Seattle channel. You can come to City Hall and pay attention throughout the process. Next slide please. So for this year, the proposed 2025 to 2026 budget is scheduled to be delivered from the mayor's office to the city council on Tuesday, September 24th. The Select Budget Committee will start their deliberations the next day on September 25th. There will be a series of department presentations on, on their, those individual budgets. At the end of September through the beginning of October, the city council central staff will get, will present its own policy considerations for the budget in mid-October. And then, as I mentioned before, they get the economic and revenue forecast update October 22nd. So that will be considered in the, in the council's deliberations. Next slide. And then the, the back half of the, the process, go back one more please. The, the, the second half of the process is, like I said, the, the chair's balancing package will come out at the end of October. Individual council members will propose amendments and those are due on November 1st and those are incorporated into, those are actually discussed and voted on. And when they're talking about the balancing package on November 14th and 15th, then the committee will take any final votes on the budget legislation and those technical amendments November 19th. And it will all be wrapped up when city council takes its final action on the proposed budget and all the associated legislation on November 21st. So it's a two-month September, October, November process. Pretty lengthy, pretty robust. My last slide is just the various ways that the public can get involved in the budget process. There are three ways. That first is through the budget committee meetings. There's always public comment at those. They will be holding public hearings. And then of course, written comment can be incorporated and submitted to the city council. So that's all I have. It's just meant to serve as an overview as we move into the the next topic.
Olivia. Am I passing it over to the, yeah.
Well, I wasn't sure. Do we, do we want to have any questions on that section? My questions are coming. It's my topic is total 180 on a different topic.
Yeah, it's very high level. It's very quick.
Do folks have any questions on the budget process, which was very educational?
I'm wondering if the planning commission has weighed in on the city budget process in the past.
So in the position that I'm in right now, 10 years, I've been staff to the commission for 10 years. And the only time that I recollect the planning commission getting involved was when we provided public comment requesting additional resources be allocated to OBCD for engagement around the comp plan. So other than that one time in the last 10 years, that's my only recollection. One of the reasons why there was discussion over the last month about creating this kind of budget 101 is to share with, so that all the commissioners were aware of the opportunities for public comment on the, on the budget. And given the priorities that the planning commission has established through their comment letters on the comp plan, it was suggested that we might want to have some speaking points and some kind of paper that we're about to talk about and provide public comment on the budget specific to housing. And that's what Olivia is going to talk about in a moment.
Okay, great. Thanks for explaining the subtext. I needed it spelled out.
And that's why we're having, that's why we're having this conversation. So everybody's on the same page.
Can, can you go back to the timeline so I can see when the public hearing, like I'm trying to remember when the public hearings would happen? If folks wanted to give.
I don't think the public hearings.
Okay.
I don't think the public hearings have been advertised. Maybe, maybe scheduled, but I haven't seen any dates at this point.
And if people wanted to find those dates, like, or they wanted to submit written public comment, where do they go to find the information?
Should be the city council select budget committee.
Okay.
Has, has, all of their agendas are on the city's website. They're posted in advance with the agenda packet and there should be an address or, or something. I haven't seen that yet, but we can, we can also track that and help with that when the time comes closer.
I will pop the link in the chat to, to that website. And for members of the public listening in, if you just Google Seattle City Council 2024 Select Budget Committee, it'll pop up. So, so right now there are not public hearing dates noted, nor are there future meetings indicated. But we as staff will keep an eye on this and then continue to update the commission on when those, when the public hearings are scheduled as well as when the budget committee meetings will be taking place because there will be public comment at those meetings as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Right. I guess with that, we'll turn it over to Olivia.
Okay, great. So, housing affordability paper. So as Vanessa sort of alluded to, we've been talking about this concept for a little over a month, a month and a half, but it's mostly, the conversation has happened in two executive committee meetings and the last two Housing and Neighborhood Committee meetings. So not everyone in the full commission has had the chance to hear the conversation and, and to weigh in. So the main goal for today is just to try to get everyone up to speed. So everyone's on the same page. And to, to get buy-in from folks who haven't been part of the conversation yet. And you know, today's meetings are really, since we're just at the outline stage, it's a really good time to tweak ideas if that needs to happen. You know, raise any issues that you see in, you know, the concept so far and throw out, you know, concerns that you might have or questions. In, within the conversations that, you know, at some point there was a discussion that the budget's a huge part of how things that the commission often weighs in on like the comprehensive plan gets implemented, right? It has an important role in how a lot of the policies and plans that we all discussed are actually rolled out. And so there was a desire to have some sort of discussion about the budget and to weigh in. Vanessa's giving me power because my laptop is not plugged in and I'm running the slideshow. But so there was an effort to, or a desire to talk about the budget process, but then we had to narrow down what it was the group actually wanted to talk about. Because you know, there's so many facets to how planning intersects with the budget and different topics from transportation to displacement to housing. You know, parks, we could go on. So the group eventually decided that, you know, to really prioritize, we would focus first on housing affordability and really zero in. So as you'll see on the screen here, this is just an overview of sort of the concept behind this paper. And then I'll get into the actual outline that we've discussed so far. But the message that we zeroed in on was that we need as a city to protect, maintain and grow funding for affordable housing and community stabilization programs. And really the goal behind this piece is to build awareness within the public about, you know, housing affordability and how it intersects with the budget. And to make the data on the housing crisis more approachable and relatable to everyone, even those who may be experiencing housing security and don't think about housing affordability on an everyday basis. And the hope is to empower people to engage in the budget process and support funding for affordable housing and the programs that support community-led projects with it during the budget process. So with that in mind, the audience is really folks who aren't knee-deep in housing affordability conversations. We know housing advocates are going to be part of this conversation. We know folks who are, you know, avid urbanists are already part of the budget conversation and are tracking this. And so the goal is to expand to broaden the circle a little bit of people who are interested in this topic and who may be willing to to make public comments or to write a letter, contact their council member on this issue during the budget cycle. And so we're talking to folks who are probably, you know, curious about housing and interested in engaging, but not necessarily familiar with the process or don't necessarily have the tools to craft a statement. And the timeline for this project, as John alluded to, the goal would be to try to get this out early on in the budget process. And so we're looking at a late September release date. The hope is to try to be able to utilize both of those September full commission meetings. But without running too late into the budget process. So we're kind of walking that line with our timeline. So yeah, that's, that's sort of the concept behind how we got to writing a piece about housing affordability as it relates to the budget cycle. And as you'll see through the outline, it is a really narrow focus or compared to what the commission typically writes. I think it's going to be a different different challenge for this group than what we normally work on because we are trying to keep it very high level and clear and simple so that it's really accessible to a broader range of folks than what a lot of our papers usually reach. And so just as a sort of a mental framing, it's good for us all to remember that the pieces that the commission has already written about the comprehensive plan, about, you know, long-range planning topics related to displacement, related to transportation, the right of way, those are all still out there. And we can definitely reference them and link to other references, but this document is a little more zeroed in and high level than what we typically write. So this next slide I'm going to show is just sort of an example. You don't have to try to read it. It's all example text. It's all just an example. But just to give you a sense of the type of layout we're envisioning here. And so as you can see, it's more graphic heavy than what we normally write, more white space, more clarity and simplified. And so there's not a lot of text here, right? So if we're trying to produce a document that's two to three pages and is more graphics forward, that this is part of why we're hoping for a lighter touch on some of the concepts and why we're going to have to be judicious with, with our words and what we include. So this was just to, just to help you visualize what, what we're talking about in terms of this paper. Moving into the actual outline. At the last Housing and Neighborhoods Committee meeting, we kind of came up with a few concepts for the introduction and the conclusion. So the introduction section would be brief, just a couple, like a paragraph or two. Talking about, you know, why do we care about housing affordability as a city and as a community? And the thought was that it would be a series of statements about, you know, all the reasons that housing affordability is so important, including how it impacts everyone, how access to affordable housing can decrease the risk of homelessness. You know, the ways that housing stability can lead to improved health outcomes for both children and adults, can lead to improved educational outcomes for kids. And tying in the way that investments in the production and preservation of affordable housing really impacts the broader local economy. You know, it goes beyond just the individuals who are housed. And touching on how when we do not have enough housing as a city, especially affordable housing, we see increased rates of displacement and disproportionate impacts to communities of color and low income households. So there's a lot there, but the thought is to have that all just be as high-level statements. We could include some links. We could have an end notes section to this piece, but these would just be sort of standalone statements that stand as they are without the typical kind of backup research that we often include in our papers. The next section is sort of the meat of the paper and it would be bringing in sort of the context of the housing crisis. And this would be where most of the data and visuals are included in the piece. I should note, I don't know if Zeo's still on the call with us, but you very graciously offered to help with some of the graphics on this piece. And so we've been brainstorming those. But as part of the discussion today, if you have thoughts on how some of these that I'm going to touch on could look or things that definitely should be included in them, all those thoughts are welcome as we continue to flesh this out. So within this sort of body of the piece, the context section, there was a request to include high-level information on the housing gap. So perhaps a graphic that shows the housing unit, the production of housing units that's needed within the next 20 years and then also indicating what percentage of that needs to be subsidized. And really in as high level of a way as possible, noting that the market is not going to produce this housing on its own, right? That was an important point to make since a lot of folks who are not really involved in the affordable housing crisis might not realize that market rate housing isn't going to get us where we need to be to meet housing needs. The next section gets into more of the mechanics of how the city of Seattle is already addressing affordable housing. And so there was a desire to have perhaps a graphic that shows the web or system of city departments and community organizations and funding sources. of city departments and community organizations and funding sources that come together to create affordable housing within Seattle. And to touch on, you know, it wouldn't be comprehensive, but to try to give a sense of how broad the work of affordable housing really is within the city and how many hands sort of support that process. And I think the thought behind this was to, especially thinking about the budget, to give people a broader sense of, you know, if you're cutting certain programs or departments, it may not be as simple as keeping an eye on like the office of housing's budget. If there are cuts made to other sections of the city budget that touch on the affordable housing sector, you know, it will, it will impact the outcomes. So that is one of the graphics that could be included. There was also a discussion of including a timeline of the housing development process from funding to completion, because there's been a lot of discussion about that already, especially at City Council, sort of with questions about why it takes so long for projects to be built and what's being done with the money that the city's already invested. And another key piece here that probably wouldn't be a graphic so much as a discussion point that would tie into those is to note the importance of funding that supports community-led projects and how those investments really get amplified by the community benefits that they bring, right? So it's when you invest in a community-led project that is building multifamily housing plus other resources, not only are folks being housed, but there are often community centers or important retail hubs or third spaces that are provided that are culturally relevant, and that really go much further than just that initial investment of funds. And then this section would sort of conclude with a note about the housing gap that remains. So despite this complex system that's in place, we still have this housing gap. And, you know, what happens if that gap isn't addressed or is allowed to grow, who is most impacted? That's the meat of the paper. Again, there's a lot there, right? And so, we're going to have to walk a fine line of providing information to make it clear and providing enough information without going too in-depth on some of the topics to sort of lose the attention of the audience that we're aiming for. And then this last slide just shows the kind of two concluding sections. So there could be a call-to-action sort of section that is essentially the so what, or you know, what are we asking? That could touch on what do we need to do? And returning to that message of, you know, we need to protect, maintain, and grow the funding for housing affordability programs in Seattle, and noting that folks can get involved by following the city budget process and speaking up for programs that support this work. And then, the thought was to end with a closing statement that is really kind of forward-looking and positive, thinking about how housing affordability brings benefits to everyone, kind of echoing that opening statement, but noting that, you know, abundant housing leads to a lot of these sort of beautiful concepts and positive outcomes, like increased cultural and economic diversity, better walkability and access to services. Housing affordability means, you know, you would have the stability to stay long-term in your home and build community, might have the ability to raise children in the city, or to age in place in your home, or even see, you know, children and family friends able to move back home to Seattle that have been displaced. And kind of concluding with the thought that there's, you know, we have a future where all of these things are possible and they're tangible, and we get there through building more housing and focusing on subsidized affordable housing and community-led housing projects. So that's the vision for this piece. I know you all have heard a lot of information today, and our brains are all a little mushy, but we wanted to make sure everyone had the chance to hear what the group has been thinking, weigh in on this concept. So, if folks want to ask questions, or, you know, find out something that just is not working, isn't clear.
If I could just hop in to, thank you very much, Olivia. Olivia's been carrying this ball, and thanks to John for carrying the budget ball, so to speak. Just want to reiterate that the, as, as we talked about this in a couple of different venues and different committee meetings, the idea is really to, to put together a cogent, concise, and very approachable statement of why affordable housing, why it should matter to people who, 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 you know, think about going to the grocery store and think about everybody that you might encounter in the produce aisle, and how, how do you, how do you, in a 60 seconds, get somebody to understand, like, why is housing affordability important? If, if an individual isn't in subsidized housing and they happen to live in a neighborhood where housing is really stable, why should it matter to them? And so, that was really the driving focus between, behind what, what we're trying to get, get at right here, is how to make this, how to make housing affordability, why should it matter to everybody? And the fact that housing affordability benefits everybody, benefits all communities. And then just want to reiterate something else that Olivia mentioned, which is, we're really trying to keep the scope of this pretty narrow and understandable, given the fact that what the timeframe is. So we want to put something out there in time for people to be able to reference it as the budget discussions begin. And then to also acknowledge that there are a number of allied organizations and community-based organizations and advocacy organizations who are going to be very engaged with the budget at, at a much deeper level of detail than the paper that we are proposing putting out will be doing. Just to help frame your conversation.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to open up the, the floor for comments, reactions, questions. Please drop your name in the chat. And I think I might prioritize calling on people who don't sit in the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee, so we can garner reactions from people who haven't had a chance to be part of this discussion so far. Deanna, you did drop a question in the chat box earlier. Do you want to ask that question?
Yeah, and, you know, understanding we want to stay to a discreet, you know, succinct, efficient message. I think even if we don't have like a contextualized box, some, some kind of message that allows to more robustly elaborate on the complexity of this policy, like that we're not just trying to provide oversimplified solutions, that there are, there are layered elements to this, and like, you know, a true affordable housing policy and funding for it would have to be very nuanced. And here, you know, the commission is providing what we think are the most salient approaches to this, but that it's not an exhaustive list. I think that would just be helpful to kind of share that we understand that there could be more creative solutions to propose, right? But that this paper is not intended to answer all of those topics. So, as an example, you know, you know, what percentage, and I don't know that we know this, this data, right? What percentage of, of the unhoused population suffers of addiction? And how, you know, is that something that is, because I don't know this, right? Does that preclude someone from accessing affordable housing, right? And what are we doing about that population if so? So I don't know that answer, because I'm not knowledgeable enough. But what does that mean for what the broad population perceives as being part of the homelessness crisis in the city, right? The majority of them are folks that either experience addiction or severe mental health issues, right? And how is that being tackled for the population to perceive that like, hey, I'm going to put in tax dollars to alleviate this issue, and it will also alleviate the issues that I experience daily on the street? So, not trying to say that we want to tackle, you know, the complexity of the issue, but it just seems like then it might, you know, whatever we show as progress, is that going to be felt at the neighborhood level with people? And I can just speak to my personal experience living in Capitol Hill. My particular block is one that is, you know, I, I, my unsheltered neighbors are all mostly folks that experience severe addiction or mental health, have severe mental health issues. So just curious on how we are intending to nuance, or at least comment on it, to keep it broad, not necessarily go into it, but acknowledge it.
The first thing that's coming to mind for me with this question, Deanna, is maybe a tie-in with this graphic that we're talking about that touches on the web or system of city departments and organizations that play a role in affordable housing. So maybe there's a note about like the Human Services Department and the many services that they provide to specifically unhoused communities in Seattle, and how that ties in with like addiction services programs and the services that they provide, right? So they are part of that housing solution within the city and part of the process.
Yeah, ecosystem.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Jamie.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the challenges is like, we're trying to keep this to like two pages. And, and I think within that, the issue of houselessness is, is like, you could do an entire issue paper just on that topic. And I think like, what we were trying to do with this outline was to really highlight the issue at a, at kind of a higher level and at like a big-picture scale. I think because this is something that we are dealing with, it's like at the city council level, we also have to be kind of wary about the conversation getting steered down a rabbit hole and wanting to make sure that folk, that, you know, the point where we want to get across of that just there simply isn't enough housing, period, let alone for folks struggling with mental illness or addiction, right? And so, how do we, how do we kind of drive home, here are all the existing programs and here are all the big gaps? In addition to that, and, you know, if we, if we want to do a focus on the, the, the challenge, particularly for our houseless folks, that could be, that could be another paper we do where we dig further, deeper into that particular issue. I think, I'm not saying it's that we shouldn't mention it, I just think like, we should do so in a way where we can keep the focus on, on the larger, bigger, bigger issue that we're trying to highlight for the council.
Yeah, no, Jamie, I agree with you, just to respond very quickly. What I was trying to mention is, I, I'm unaware, and maybe, you know, in our pool of expertise in the commission, we, we understand that there are barriers to access to affordable housing for folks with addiction and mental illness, right? If there are, you know, distinct barriers to that kind of access, what the regular layman's, you know, kind of like neighborhood community experiences is that those are the kind of populations that are most visibly, you know, not accessing, you know, housing. And so, if that is the case, that is kind of the point I'm trying to make sure we, we mention, because in terms of even like politically, right? You make a, you know, a decision about funding and taxes, et cetera, and what people experience on day-to-day on the streets doesn't feel commensurate on what, how they are experiencing the homelessness crisis, right? Then that's where I wanted to kind of draw the pinpoint of saying, this is focused on this, knowing that there's challenges and barriers for these communities, which are like, by and large, what, who people experience on the street, right? Ergo, separate topic, not topic of this paper, but acknowledging it.
Well, I think.
Go ahead, Jamie. I'm just, I guess I'm not really following what you think the, like, like if we, if we are focusing on what are the, the things that most people are experiencing day-to-day around housing affordability? Like, is that, is that what you're kind of saying we should focus on?
Yeah, no, I'm saying our paper is about that, right? We should also acknowledge what people, when, when these, when we're asking council to make these decisions and changes in policy and funding, right? They are tied to political decisions, which are kind of related to how normal people that don't understand, you know, the complexity, et cetera, like tie in the issue, how politicians are addressing it, and then how it gets addressed. And, you know, making sure, and, and again, this is, I guess it's more of a question, and maybe someone has the answer. Is there specific barriers, right, to access affordable housing for people with severe addiction and mental health? I don't know that that's the case. I assume that is the case, I don't know that it's the case. So our paper is not geared to tackling that problem.
Right. But one of the solutions to removing those barriers is to create vastly more permanent supportive housing. So, you know, housing alone is not going to untangle and address and solve the fentanyl crisis. It's not going to magically create the mental health resources that we need across the state and the nation. But there are things that, community-based organizations through the Equitable Development Initiative, and organizations that tap into funding from the Seattle Office of Housing, and organizations looking to utilize the incentives that OPCD is trying to roll out through like zoning incentives and land use incentives through the comprehensive plan. All of those are going to play a role in increasing housing supply and increasing the type of housing that's permanent supportive housing, where people who really need that additional support have the permanent support, the, the housing that's permanent for them and the services that are attached. So, I mean, I, I think there's part of that. It's kind of a complex question of folks accessing housing with drug addiction. You know, there, there's a range of things that serve as barriers for, barriers for folks in terms of accessing housing that extend beyond just the fact that they need services in order to thrive and remain stably housed. But I think the real challenge will be threading the needle of acknowledging it, but not in two pages when we're really talking about budget, about not going down that. But I, I think what Deanna is trying to do is to say, these are the kinds of conversations that average folks are having in Seattle. And so, how do we, how do we be, be aware of that as we think through how we put together the framing of the paper, of the paper? It's like a handout, I don't really know what, I don't know if paper's the right term. But I appreciate you elevating it, and, and I think, yeah, and I think we, well, we can navigate our way through the, the edits, right? I think staff can take this back and work through it. That's my thought, and I'm really, really sorry, Monica, for talking over you. So you're welcome to disagree with me, you're welcome to continue the conversation on this thread. I'm very sorry about that.
Don't be sorry, I was actually, I, I was going to say something along those lines of like, there are these Housing First initiatives, and there are sets of initiatives that are really directed at that population, and it seems like that isn't exactly what we're trying to target with this paper. And also, I see what Deanna is saying about if people are expecting this to talk about the universe of housing in Seattle, and we don't touch on the homelessness situation at all, that might seem like an oversight. So, I mean, I guess you're exactly right, just finding the balance of, you know, we, like, we recognize the homelessness crisis, we're talking more specifically about the affordability crisis, like, you know, like there, and also like, we recognize it as a complex ecosystem, and we're not, you know, we can't, we can't solve everything in two pages. You know, I mean, just, I, you know, how we, how transparent we are about that, I think is always valuable. And thank you for raising that, Deanna.
Thanks, Monica, you nailed it. Yeah. Very cool.
Okay. I am going to circle then back to Lauren, who's going to take us in a different direction, a practical direction.
She had the discussion. I'm just going to be really like straightforward, like, are, is our objective in writing this because we are worried about the resourcing of housing and our, our recommendations today as a part of this budget conversation? I mean, I'm fully aware of the city budget status, and are we, as a planning commission, just interested in putting all of our chips, like, on the table to say, this is the most important thing to protect right now, and here's why, and here's what the, you know, kind of lowest common denominator human living in Seattle needs to understand, and that should inform any engagement on the budget? Like, is that why we're saying, like, we're producing a housing affordability fact sheet? to inform budget conversations? Or is there a different objective that I'm just like kind of missing?
I can jump in and provide a little context, and then I'll definitely invite others who were part of this sort of burgeoning discussion over the last couple of weeks. And please correct me if I'm not, if if my perception is wrong. I believe there are a number of commissioners who are concerned about a proposed amendment to this year's budget that would have provided the EDI funds and really saw that the EDI program, EDI and associated programs may really be at risk as we move into the budget cycle.
Yeah.
We started the conversation talking about, you know, how are we engaged with the mayor's proposed plan after it comes out end of this year, beginning of next year? And then in that conversation, we realized we may want to be actually engaging in the budget before we engage in the comp plan conversation. Because if there isn't adequate resources in the budget, it's it's unfortunate that the budget is coming before the is is
Yeah.
The tail of the budget is wagging the dog of the comp plan because the budget is a two year process. The comp plan is a 20 year vision. So but I invite not but and I definitely invite others on the call who were part of these the past conversations over the past couple of weeks to to either say I was wrong or I was completely off base.
That's clear enough to me, and thank you for saying it like that. And I would almost look to us to be more forthright about that. Housing affordability to me, like, we've been in a housing affordability crisis for the entire time I've been on the planning commission. And I'm sorry to say that I'm like a bit desensitized to it because it because we I feel powerless slash impacted by it, you know, and Deanna, I'm appreciating your points of like, maybe someone's everyday experience of housing affordability is not only their own mortgage or rent check, but like seeing houseless neighbors like struggling and like human agony on the streets. So it's like, okay, what? How do I engage with this? I think that we could really target our like, I'm now, I'm now catching up. Thank you, everybody for, you know, bearing with me here. But like, all of the good work that we have done on the comp plan, on our comment letters, on really centering equitable equitable development and how our values as a city translate into our budget. Like, that's what I want to see this be about. I don't want it to just be like, housing affordability is important. I want it to be like, not, obviously, we aren't like activists, can't just like tell be as forthright maybe as I would be in my personal life, to be able to say like, something is at risk here.
Yeah.
Something is at risk here. And it's not the 20 year growth plan that is in the comp plan that also is at risk. It is the resourcing for the immediate needs of our city. Just to say, if we don't do this now, we are two more years down the road, and that's what that means. Like, this is what this means. Maybe we grounded in the near term reality of housing need. And I love the idea of kind of showing the picture, the pie chart, whatever it is of frankly, all of the supports needed. It's Office of Housing, it's King County, it's it's all of it. I'm not a housing professional, but just to be able to say like, this isn't, this isn't risk. There's some things to think about. And if we invest here, these are the outcomes that we are investing in. You know, I just, I think the way that this presentation is is worded, it was just kind of going over my head. But now I see it in the link of everything that we have been working on and working towards as a part of the comp plan to see it undermined by this administration. And now we're entering a budget process that I'm I fear will be characterized by the same things, you know? So I I see the, I now see the strategic kind of message and moment that we are entering into. And I would invite us to maybe think about more targeted language around. I don't, I don't necessarily know if equitable development is the right thing. I don't need that to be divisive or maybe to speak towards a something that may or may not happen. But just, you know, this is, this is, these are our priority steps around maintaining an equitable, inclusive Seattle. And it means tangibly investing in these things, you know? So.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Reactions to that?
I love it.
Deanna.
Thanks. Love it.
Go, Rose.
Okay. I was like quitting.
Sorry.
Yeah. And Lauren, to provide added context, because I was at one of the early exact sessions where we started talking about this. And and my suggestion portion is, we had definitely talked about, well, who is, who are we to get involved with the Seattle Planning Commission? Our mandate is related to the comp plan, right? And my suggestion is to make it clear that part of stewarding the comp plan is making sure that things are being followed through, right? And so my suggestion would be to make it clear that like affordable housing has been a long term objective of this city for a long time. And like you said, Lauren, what's at stake is the immediacy, but it's been a long thing. So I think just reemphasizing that we, the Seattle Planning Commission, our role is related directly to the comp plan and how that translates to the budget process is important. We cannot forget to include that link in my mind.
Yeah.
In a way that people understand, because not everybody understands what a comprehensive plan is. And so in laypeople's terms to explain what is at risk. If you don't mind, I want to do a time check because in my mind, I thought our meeting went till 5:30, but my speaker's notes say 5:20. So Vanessa, can I invite you to weigh in and tell me?
Absolutely. Thank you. I couldn't, I fast enough. Yes, our meeting officially ends at 5:20. I don't want to curb the conversation, but but I want to be respectful of everybody's time who were who might have been planning on including it 5:20. So I suggest maybe we take five more minutes to wrap things up. And I think this has been a great conversation. I I feel like we've got some good, great direction.
Yeah, I I personally feel like what Lauren has said and what Rose has said, and I think that moves us in the right direction. I frankly was having a hard time connecting this framing that we came up with back to like our role as stewards of the comprehensive plan and kind of the case statement for what's at risk. And I would broaden that risk to not just the Equitable Development Initiative, but the city is going to face really difficult decisions around staffing in departments that don't generate revenue, like the Office of Planning and Community Development. And there's also revenue sources that could potentially be reallocated, such as the jumpstart tax away from housing and towards other things. And so i- if we if we believe in this, if we buy into this long term vision for the comprehensive plan, it starts with investing in that future today. And so I anyway, I I I think it resonates, I think, before staff go forth and do some amendments. I just want to check with the rest of the group to make sure everybody would be okay with this shift in direction. And again, disagreement is totally fine because it's in the points of tension where we come up with our best work. So Nick is saying, okay.
Michaela, I would offer a friendly amendment that I don't think is a shift. I think it's an evolution and a honing.
Honing and improvement.
Wrapping this back to the mission of the planning commission as stewards of the comprehensive plan and making that direct link. Thank you so much, Rose. That makes, thanks, everybody who weighed in. Because I I do feel like it's really coming together, what we're trying to do now.
Oh, and I I have to say out loud for the record that Lauren just came up with hashtag invest in the vision. So tweet that now. Get it out there in the zeitgeist.
Can I just ask the group, in the time that we have left, given that there hasn't a lot of new ideas pulled out just here in the last like five minutes? You know, in an effort to be able to draft for this by the next time we see everyone, because we're looking at maybe not really talking as a full group again until September 12. How how do we think this main message has evolved? I think just like as staff, what we'll need to be able to take this forward is at least a really solid message that the group wants to go us around, and we can fill in the rest. So how has this message evolved? What would you add? What would you change? Are we? Is this not relevant at all? And the message is because we're stewards of the comprehensive plan, the planning commission cares about the budget more broadly? What are your thoughts?
I think it's exactly the invest in the vision. Like, this is the first step towards moving toward our vision for a sustainable, inclusive, equitable city. And like, here's what the breakdown of the budget to date has been. And these are the outcomes we're getting. So we we need to grow the pie. Like, to me, it's it feels simple like that. Like, here's the types of things that support equitable, inclusive housing choices in our city. Like, even just a simple pie chart, here's here's the players and the types of things they do. And so like, continue to grow, continue to grow this. Like, it's not like a stasis or cut, it's a grow. And we get these outcomes collectively. But to me, linking it to the money, linking it to the budget was kind of what I was missing. And even just an educational thing of like, here's the proportion of the city budget that kind of goes to stuff like this, you know? So maybe bring in a little more of the money as y'all deem appropriate.
Jamie?
Lauren just said what I was gonna say.
Sorry. I just want to say too, there have been some really great letters written by community leaders regarding EDI and some, there have been some really incredible, there's been some amazing organizing and some some really beautiful statements made on the EDI budget change, which I can try and find some of them and share them. But I think that it's useful to kind of, you know, like, reflect the community voice that is already advocating for this specifically.
You're getting a thumbs up. Can I ask that you forward that on to Vanessa?
Yes.
She can. Thank you. Lauren, do you want the final word?
No.
No, okay.
Sorry for jumping the queue. I get carried away by my own person.
No, it's okay. I I prefer discourse, which can sometimes be feel a little out of order. Well, everybody, I I think I'm gonna wrap us up. Really, really, really appreciate this meeting. My brain is full of content and full of hope for what's ahead of us as a city. And yeah, just wanted to appreciate folks for staying long on a hot August afternoon.
Michaela.
Deanna.
Yeah, just really quick. You know, I have like, not, you know, they're not major comments. I'm sure they're not necessarily going to make it to the Sub area plan. But so my understanding is Vanessa's going to try to find a time before to meet with Jesse and team, right, for those of their plans to provide, you know, a few more comments. They're not, you know, mine, mine were around economic development and tourism and how that is being addressed in the Sub area plan, you know, short term rental housing. Why is that not thought about in a Sub area plan? You know, the amount of Airbnbs versus hotel rooms versus those kinds of things? And how that impacts housing availability, right? Like, that's why I care about it. And but tourism being the motor of downtown. And really what I see is a justification for saying, let's improve downtown significantly. And the tension between that and where people want to live and the lack of open space and the complacency with just the amount of open space that that exists in downtown. So just curious how that's being tackled in this of the area plans? Or how, you know, is being thought of to frame further creative opportunities for open space? In any case, just wondering what is going to be our path as a commission to provide those kinds of comments? Because it took me a little bit to collect my thoughts just in the time that we were receiving the information and my ability to articulate those comments and questions.
Vanessa, my feeling is that this commission probably has a lot of thoughts, similar, you know, detailed thoughts. They presented a lot of detailed information, and I think that deserves time for us to sort of react to it and contribute to it. And our committee meetings might be a great venue to bring them back in. And let's, at this meeting, we're going to talk about this plan. Here's the information that you can have in advance. They can come with some pre prepared questions that they have us think about in advance, like the ones that they said today when I asked them how we could be helpful. And perhaps commissioners could also submit some questions so we could have a facilitated and effective discussion in the meeting. As I think, and when I was in our interviews and I was telling new commissioners, potential new commissioners about what we do, in the talking points that were prepared for me, we are not just stewards of the comprehensive plan, but we are also stewards of these sub area plans. Is that correct, Vanessa?
stewards of all plans.
Of all plans. So it just seems appropriate that we would be more than briefed on the sub area plans, but that we would be a stakeholder that would be engaged and and that we would have lots of interesting ideas to and expertise to contribute to those conversations, particularly since we live in some of these neighborhoods that were under discussion today. So.
Plus one.
I think today's discussion is a great entree for me to be able to go back to Erica and Jesse and say, wow, commissioners were really interested in everything you had to say. I'd love to put the deck in front of them, give them time to percolate, to digest, and let's, so I can engage them more actively on what is their timeline? When would we? When would it be most helpful? When do they have the ability to meet with us again? And certainly, we would hope that that would be before the plans themselves, the drafts become developed.
Yeah, I think we would rather influence the drafts, you know, enforce the drafts rather and be consulted on that and in this stage, rather than once pen gets put to paper.
And to help, you know?
Yeah, yeah, to help. Okay. Thanks, Deanna. Appreciate you bringing that back up just to make sure we had clarity on a path forward there. All right, everybody, I am going to adjourn us now at 5:30 on August 8. That concludes our meeting. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Everyone. Bye.